Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the study session of the University City City Council meeting to order at five thirty on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Before we turn it over to the police chief, are there any changes to the agenda for tonight's meeting? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
There it goes. Yeah, it's worked. Honorable Mayor and council members, I've asked Chief Hampton to provide you with a presentation on the University City Police Department substation procedures. And so after the presentation, I'm sure Chief Hampton will be willing to respond to any questions that you have. Chief Hampton?
I think all the microphones, by the way, right when the first time you use it, you may want to pop it a little bit early because I think they need a little fresh time.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the council, Mr. Rose. I'm here to give some procedural guidance on the police substations request that we've been getting throughout the city from some locations. This is a very brief presentation, but willing to answer any questions and kind of lays out the requirements that of the vendors that we have to deal with, whether that's the federal authorities or whether that's the county and state authorities as well. Sorry. Yeah. The technical difficulties, we'll get right to it, Charlie, though. Sure. Yeah, yeah, start getting started. Second, second slide. Yes, sir. The slide that's being presented up, this is dealing with the SEJIS. We like to use the abbreviations. The SEJIS is Criminal Justice Information Services. And specifically, this is FBI authorities. Yeah, yeah. Sure. Okay. The FBI requirements for criminal justice information and transit is a minimum of one hundred twenty-eight encryptions. For one location of storage, there's a minimum of, there's requirements of two hundred fifty-six bit encryptions. So specifically, when we're talking about the equipment, the systems and the hardware that we utilize, whether that's dispatching, whether that's cameras, whether that is surveillance, whether that is servers, networks, anything dealing with our CAD system, which is our report writing system. We have to go through these requirements for any of the vendors that we have to vet in order to be used here in University City. Not going to read step by step of every requirement in here, but like multiple of the radio equipment that UCPD Dispatching Center has is loaned by way of the ECC, Emergency Communications Commission. So to have broadcasting and outgoing sites or locations or substations of such, they have to meet certain requirements that are oversighted by this agency specifically. So the ECC is another entity that we have to kind of deal with on equipment. Excuse me. Excuse me. You can kind of see the policy overview statement dealing with the ECC. This is the, this is the authority that comes out and inspects and audits our equipment and audit the equipment that is kind of on loan. To be a PSAP, and a PSAP is a dispatching law enforcement entity or any entity that can gain that that accreditation by way of going through their systems. And going through their systems is a, is a major, major accomplishment, major requirement dealing with the the oversight that they kind of provide on that. Let's go to Regis. This is another vendor that we, and I'm only specifying some of the vendors that we, am I skipping anything? No. Okay. Go through Regis. Regis is a local provider of criminal justice information. So this information that is provided for, whether that's perpetrators, victims, witnesses, whatever, has to be in this encrypted mode. So this is, we have a lot of portals that we have to get integrated, whether that's Regis being integrated with the ECC or whether it's ECC being integrated with the SEJIS. So specifically vendors, let's take Will Electronics. Let's take any of the Genetek licensing that we deal with for surveillance cameras. Flock, let's take those entities that we may have partnerships with. They are, they are all required to get access or authority approval from these entities that I'm covering. The Regis, therefore Regis and ECC requirements conform with the previously mentioned SEJIS requirements. The ECC strictly requires a secure area for communications equipment, meaning that if a substation has the capability of hearing transitions from dispatching, they have to meet these requirements. Now, the accreditation body of the Missouri Police Chiefs, or if there's, let's say, any other international accrediting bodies like Kalia, they all have their own specifications as to what they allow from entities that you put your stamp of approval on. Specifically, if you say that this is a police substation, they have oversight and doing that accreditation audit or investigation for that location. One of the biggest things, and this is not being brought up here, but specifically custodial arrests, the detainment of people temporarily, that is not something that, that I'm suggesting specifically for substations, but that is one of the most stringent requirements that you must pass. These are examples of small police state substations utilizing certain communities. When I, when I have to go to, I had to go outside of the area to kind of locate some of these smaller ones that are in place. When I, when you speak of regional partners like St. Louis County, they have what you call districts. So those are in some sense a substation, but it's a lot larger entity when you're dealing with a district, like a North County District or Jennings as a, as a district, the Ardellwood or anything of such, you have districts instead of substations governing that particular area and that community. These are some poorly constructed substations within other communities. And I only use these as examples as just some shacks or just kind of a hole in the wall type of locations that I'm sure are not meeting certain requirements of the, that I speak of, of the ECC, the SEJIS, or even Regis itself. Just use, use a couple visuals on some of the previous substation issues that have occurred here in the St. Louis area. This is literally down the street from us, down on Delmore. This was the MetroLink incident of officers and, and personnel within that location. So I'm sure we all kind of know some of those stories dealing with that. Accreditation requirements. Accreditation requirements that allow all police substations to be thoroughly inspected and audited by the accrediting body, meaning that you have no, you have no say so whether or not they want to do an inspection or an audit on any of these substations. So if you, if, if so is approved, then it's kind of taken it out of, well, we don't want you to inspect that location. This is our real police station. If we saying that, if we are saying that this is our entity that we are utilizing, then they will have to inspect it. Policy and procedural requirements in place by the outside entities that support, and this is kind of summarizing some of the stuff I'm speaking of the entities that support municipal law enforcement, like I said, SEJIS, Regis, St. Louis County with ECC. Another entity I would throw in there is Genetek. Genetek licensing deals with us viewing the surveillance cameras. So just purchasing surveillance cameras doesn't give you an automatic view, viewing license. You have to purchase that from a Genetek. And they're all worried about backdoor portals into their own systems, into their own networks, into their own portals, into, and, and some of that information being leaked out haphazardly. All costs regarding equipment installation, operations and maintenance to be absorbed by the business is stakeholder. This is something that we're asking that we not absorb this cost or the city not absorb this cost. But if the, if so approved by the mayor and the council, that the entity that you so might approve have to absorb this cost in going into this construction and this layout enhancements. Separate restroom facilities from the public and staff contained within the substation is the best practice for officer safety and privacy. Separate phone communication as personal data will be disclosed with law enforcement staff, i.e. dispatchers giving us data birds, social securities, private information, private pedigree information. All Wi-Fi technology connections to be secured and separated from business normal operations. So no shared Wi-Fi is, is not only suggested, but it's not going to pass an inspection while dealing with any of the portals that we deal with. Only access by UCPD personnel as well as any surrounding law enforcement agencies that see fit, whether that's Clayton, Wash U PD, willing to participate by way of an MOU. So you can avoid similar incidents that, that took place with the county, city, MetroLink, Wash U personnel down on Delmore. Any approved, correction, CCTV capability for UCPD personnel only. That is not something that we're asking that private businesses or private employees have access to, to view surveillance on that for best practices. Any approved UCPD substation shall not be for the primary use for the vendors' personal and physical security purposes. Police secondary security or private security would be suggested for those commitments. The entire community should benefit from an approved police substation. Use and operational guidelines of any UCPD person that approved police substations governed by UCPD standard operational policies or general orders. We have a pretty much a general order policy on everything. I know we have a lot of administrative regulations. We have ten times that more in general orders dealing with specific policy oversight to make sure that we're governing the use and, and the, the practices that we have out there in the field. Approval of UCPD substations shall be decided by the city, by the mayor and the council members at that stage. Go to the last page. Sorry. A well-designed room with minimum sizing of twenty-six by thirty, and we're using that with current spacing that we have over there that we know is a sizable enough room to house some of the dimensions and the equipment like AV and network ports for technological setups and hardwired telephones and what have you. All network ports inspected and authorized by UCPD IT personnel. We currently have a new IT public safety specialist. They're very helpful. We have an assist personnel that is within the police department as well. Single-person restroom authorized, what have you. Separate locking mechanism system, very similar to how we have authority in and out of certain rooms and protocols for the police station needs to be had for a substation as well, so that way we can ensure no one is, is entering illegally. Printer, a lot of times invalid information, pedigree information, printer protocols. We have policies for that of not leaving someone's DOR information on a printer and not having the capability of that information being leaked out. Three working stations that are dynamically spacious with arm and leg room for large officers, including chairs. So like we said, we're not asking for a, a, a lot of room, but we have, if you're talking about specifically utilizing it to the best practices and best availability, then yes, that includes report writing. And we have mobile data, mobile data terminals, MDTs, specifically hardback laptops that we can move from the car to take in, but specifically that's still, it deals with a portal of Wi-Fi, a portal of hooking, hooking up as opposed to being hardwired in the car. Two wall monitors inside the UCPD substation for CCTV viewing. And that is for purposes of knowing what's coming outside is as far as what's dealing with our perimeter. We're not specifically acting to view employees and their interactions inside the businesses, but specifically what is, what is within the community, what is within the streets. A secured shredded bin, which is something that we have, we have tons of, we're probably in twenty more, twenty or more within the police station itself. And I know there's several around in City Hall as well. Ceiling fans and all of such. So I'll just go to the last slide, and that's dealing with the questions that any members may have and bear members of the council.
Mr. Hales.
Thank you, Mayor Crowe. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. I'll be honest, I do have a lot of questions on this topic. Is, is there a law enforcement industry definition for substation? And I'm looking at, I think it's page, slide three, maybe? We lost it on the screen. It's the police substation acceptable definition page, which states a police headquarters for a particular district from which police officers are dispatched to which persons under arrest are brought. I did some searching various places. Like, where did that definition come from?
That was actually research as well. That was a definition as to what the terms that are out there that, that specify what, what they believe a police substation is. That's not what we're saying a police substation, but this is the, that's why I say the acceptable definition that has been provided to any of the research that we've done gives us disinformation. There's a police headquarters for a particular district from which police officers are dispatched to which persons are under arrest or brought. That's what I say is slightly a difference here in this region for St. Louis County is pretty much, St. Louis County, North County co-op are pretty much the only entities that operate like that in the St. Louis County area. St. Louis City has their own districts, whether that's a union or, and, and whether you, you can go out west as well, St. Charles County. So specifically, they're just talking about smaller infrastructures that can still deal with a lot of the headquarter or headquarters or main infrastructure dealings that they, that they're required to have.
Okay, thank you. Unless I have this wrong, this all stems from a discussion about a QuickTrip and an On the Run being designated as a police substation. It started a couple of years ago with QuickTrip, which is, should be open very soon on, on Olive and North and South. And I guess have you had conversations with neighboring departments about the various designations that they've allowed QuickTrip to have all over St. Louis City and County?
Will you say QuickTrips with substations?
Yes. If you go to any QuickTrip, I mean, I've got a list of nine of them. I went to the one on Hanley and the one at Woodson Page today.
Right.
It says it's a, there's a yellow sign that says it's a safe place, which they train their employees to deal with those types of situations. And underneath it, they say police substation, and it's virtually the same sign on, I mean, I, I can't think of a QuickTrip that doesn't have such a designation.
I could think of several that, that do not have the designation that says police substation. QuickTrip has actually gotten into a business. They're kind of a competitor for us for law enforcement personnel right now. They're hiring their own police armed security, and they're equipping them with a lot of the training and equipment that law enforcement officers have. So I can see what just the, the areas that you're seeing of the, that has a substation title on it, that probably evading on out, going away specifically because they're, they're starting at a decent price comparative to law enforcement officers and personnel. And if you Google QuickTrip security, that, that'll pop up immediately. A gentleman, a male or female equipped and uniformed as is, that is a police officer, but specifically for a QuickTrip.
Thank you. Yeah, I've, I've seen those advertisements, but, but what we're talking about is a practice that is very common throughout the county. And I, I could name, you know, in the city of Overland and places in unincorporated St. Louis County, places that the, I believe the North County Cooperative of Page and one seventy on the east side. All of them have these designations. And at least where I think I was coming from and Steve and I think Councilman Smotherson is that that designation tells the public that police do come there, that they're welcome there. It tells members of the law-abiding public that, you know, that presence is common. It offers a sense of, of security. I think there's perhaps an argument that it offers a deterrent to those who don't wish to do well by the, the visitors to the business or the, or the business itself. I, I just, I guess I don't understand what I'm missing here that, that this, these exist all over town and have for over ten years.
Well, and I'm not saying that they don't exist, but I'm not also saying that those locations are in compliance neither with best practices. There could be that they do not have some of this equipment that I'm speaking of within there and that, that, that community saw fit to do that without community, without this equipment. But being in a location to where you may get an air bubble for communication and all of a sudden an officer doesn't receive that dispatching communication about an emergency, that could be problematic. So I'm just trying to give you some best practices as to what is out there as well as with the equipment that we utilize and the vendors that we have to utilize. And that goes for CCTV, that goes for the surveillance. So specifically, we're talking about access to things that we might need to be safe and keep that community safe in that area. I'm just giving some procedural guidelines as to if we do this and we do this, we have to do this. So that's, that's what I'm, shoot, now I don't make that decision.
Honorable Mayor, Councilman Hales, if I could share some insight. I think we struggled when I was speaking with Chief Hampton about the definition of a substation and because it's so varied. You know, you have some that are just storefronts, we learned, and then some that are full-fledged truly substations that are occupied by significant number of personnel. What we decided to focus on was more what is it that we're trying to achieve with the facilities and, you know, what is important for us in order to somehow enhance our public safety efforts, but also provide a greater presence in the community? And, and one of the things that we discussed was, you know, what type of information would, would be out there in the, in the facilities? Speaking of the QuickTrips or any other business that would ask us to have a facility there, and what we talked about was report writing. And so as a part of that, I think that's where, how we landed on the secure lines, for example. And if you're going to actually have police there, then they must be in a safe place. And even with the bathroom situation, that was really the focus. So I think it really hinges on, you know, more so than the definition of the police substation, its function. You know, what is it that we want to achieve with, with those facilities? And I believe that we can craft something, but we, we simply need to know what it is we're trying to achieve. If it's just a place where police, you know, drop by, they don't do any report writing. But I think that you, you would need to understand that that's just someone dropping by and, and picking up some things, maybe having a lunch or something like that. But if it's, if it's more geared towards, you know, the enhancement of our operations in the police department, then there are certain criteria that, that it's going to need to meet. That being a secure area, I think Chief has highlighted them, secure lines and, and such.
Right. And I, I'm just trying to understand that this, kind of where this either policy or proposed policy has come from, because in practice, it doesn't seem like really any of our neighbors are, are, are following it. And, and as it relates to like accreditation, there was some mention of this. I, I can't find, and I assume I have the latest Missouri State Missouri Police Chiefs Association certification standards that I printed from their website, but I don't see even a reference to substation definition. It doesn't appear to be even, even covered. I imagine a city-owned building certainly would be covered to meet those standards, but nothing about designating a business or businesses as, as substation in the fashion that we see all over town.
Right. And if I could clarify, when I mentioned Missouri Police Chiefs, that's only dealing with any entity that they say University City Police is housing. So specifically, that is just a visitor. They're, they're not the requiring body that, they're not SEJIS, they're not Regis, and they're not ECC. Those are our biggest requirement factors that we have to beat if we're using encrypted data, if we're sending personal information, if we're typing police reports, if we're, if we're printing police reports, if we're communicating pedigree information. This is, this is all of such of what I'm bringing to the forefront for that purpose and, and that purpose only.
Mr. Clay.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Crowe. Thank you, Chief Hampton, for your presentation. I am familiar with substations as, as they operate in St. Louis City. My, in my previous life, I worked with St. Louis Public Schools and was actually all over alternative education. So I had robust interaction with the, the juvenile division and, and things associated with, with where they were and what they were doing. So I, I, and I appreciate the, the research you did in, in finding out what the requirements are for the various agencies as it relates to what we'll call, for lack of a better term, a substation. But I, I'm curious, in St. Louis City, I can speak to specifically. I've certainly seen substations in other municipalities, but I, I would be surprised that, that they are, if they are establishing substations or entities that are wildly out of compliance. And so is, have you or the city manager talked with Public Safety Director, Chiefs of Police about how they establish their substations and how they are using that designation? Because I think you, you are taking a definition certainly, but I know, I know in St. Louis City, that's, that's not how it is set up. I know that. So if you could, I don't know if you have the answer to that now or something you need to research.
No, I, I have reached out to several of my colleagues within the field. There, there are very loosely used substations that may have a type. St. Louis City is one. And the dynamics from St. Louis City and University City may be slightly different in the, the crime rate and, and what they're trying to accomplish by putting a sign up specifically for that. But what I'm saying is that the use of that subset is not what we're aiming for. And what I mean by that is if we're going to take full advantage of a substation, a smaller infrastructure, then that, those officers that, if we're trying to type police reports, if we're trying to craft that intelligence information or what have you, we need a secure zone, we need a secure area. Specifically, years ago, just stamping a sign on was one, was one practice. But I can tell you, these policies and these oversights have kind of grown as time has gone. And thus is one of the examples I showed you about the MetroLink site. That got kind of pushed to the waist. I don't know if it's still in, in, in practice, but I know that was owned by Washington University. So specifically, that was not a St. Louis County site. That was owned by Washington University, that building. And the use of the different entities coming in, covering up cameras was problematic. And, and, and having oversight ahead of time before something bad happens is what I'm trying to put out.
Well, and under your leadership, I have no, our, our people wouldn't do that. So I'm not, that's not a concern I have. So, okay, I, and maybe it's, it's the, the, the purpose, what, when I hear a substation, I think it was in St. Louis City. That is, there's a sign in the window. It's a place where an officer can go. If, if nothing else for, for respite on their, on their break, um, there may be some other tasks that they can complete that, you know, don't involve the exchange of some sensitive information. I don't know that. I'm not, clearly not a law enforcement professional, but that's what I think of when I think of a substation. And maybe that's the, the wrong term. I'm, I'm open to calling it whatever. But, but that's what I'm envisioning when I, when I think of, uh, what we've been discussing.
If, if I may add, I, I did question the, uh, um, the gentleman from the mobile on the run, how many in St. Louis City do you currently have? He said three, but none of, none of them have been operable for the last few years. So specifically that is, that, that I, I, I asked why and that, you know, it's not a real understanding as to, okay, why is it not in use? What is going on with that? Has it not been upgraded, enhanced and, or is it not in compliance? And then, and maybe the sign has just been left up. I'm not sure. Yes, sir.
Mr. McMahon.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief Hampton for your, um, presentation. So when I, I was thinking about what we've been using the term substation for, it, it came from not necessarily us, but it came from our bosses when we talked about gas stations being in neighborhoods. And our bosses, the residents said, we would like, we think that these establishments might draw in some crime. Um, we, we don't, we're nervous. And so the idea was to have a greater police presence. It wasn't necessarily to s- set up a full on precinct or shop or headquarters or many. And, and so I, I did a little research and I, I researched and I found a, a substation in, in Indianapolis that was created by a partnership with, uh, an alliance in the police department. And they said it was their, their substation was designed to give officers respite during their shifts. And they wanted it to have a greater police presence in the area because the officer's car is like their office. It gives them a chance to get out and take a break, provide a place for officers to congregate, decompress, um, maybe write reports, um, grab a snack or a drink, use the restroom. Now I understand there might be safety concerns, but I think that's much smaller scope and that, that was at least my vision. And I'm not speaking for anybody else on council, but that was kind of my vision. And I think to Mr. Rose's point, it depends on what you're using it for, whether these requirements are there. If you tell your officers they're not going to dispose of documents at the substation, we don't need a shredder. Um, if you, it, I don't know how your laptops work, but if they can't download or upload anything, but they could type a report and put it in drafts. And after they got back to the station, upload it. Well, maybe we don't have to have the, the, the connection. So I think there's lots of things that we might be able to, uh, look at and change. Um, and I, I ju- I just see over this presentation that this is looking like, uh, it, it's kind of directing us more towards, and I'm glad you've got those pictures up there, more towards a larger, entity, a larger structure with more components that gets you closer to a headquarters, because both of those pictures of Sunray and Portsmouth, those are the, those are the police department headquarters. That's, those aren't substations. That's a, the, the Sunray is a, I think it's built in 2020, a $650,000 headquarters. Portsmouth, that red building just behind it, that's their city hall. Those, so that's not a well-constructed substation. Those are headquarters. So if we're talking about headquarters, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about more like I saw in, in this. So if that's the disconnect we're having, I think we might want to retool this and kind of focus on a, a smaller kind of idea of what we're thinking about, if that makes sense. And maybe we can work some of these regulations out with what we want to accomplish from what our residents told us. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. Understood. Uh, I just want to make sure that we, we are playing with apples and apples and not apples and oranges. And, and what I mean by that is that we understand what the direction of the mayor and the council is on, on the guidance of the substation. And, and if we don't want any equipment in and we're asking for, uh, just a sign going up and the, the temporary use of facilities, you're still talking about, um, um, using facilities that are in the, in the public as opposed to private settings where an officer can go to a station and use a private restroom as opposed to a public restroom and not be a target while, while on downtime. So that is just, so I'm just looking for the safety mechanisms in certain parts.
Go ahead.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, I think we have enough information now on expectations uh, as far as what the use would be, uh, for those facilities. We will likely call them something different other than a substation. Uh, if we can identify a definition that's, that, uh, can capture exactly the, the use of it. But I, I do think we have a better understanding of what, uh, you and the council expect regarding its, uh, the facility's functions.
I, I, I'm just a little bit confused because I'm in the loop enough. And if the officers are walking in the loop and they need to go to the restroom, they go in the restaurants and they use the restroom. What, what am I missing here about a separate restroom? And I know it's simplistic and I, I, I'm not belittling anything, but I'm just trying, I mean, I'm around town enough that I see our police officers and I respect them and I like them and I know where they go to the restroom when they're out, when they're out on duty. So why am I putting it in a, a private bathroom here when they go in public every place else?
Yes, honorable mayor, most officers, when they're using the restroom, and I'm, I'm just, uh, paraphrasing specifically, but if they can use a, a lockable restroom, then they would utilize that as opposed to something that is, um, open to, to numerous persons at that particular time. They would, let's, let's utilize, uh, let's say seven 11 on Olive. They have a lockable restroom, specifically one person. Man, that is one restroom that they utilize. They wanted, uh, Olive and Hanley, they utilized that restroom. So that, which is also single-person lockable restroom.
Well, I'm not sure they're lockable in the loop, but I, I don't, I don't want to belabor the point. My, my, my real concerns here have been, I don't think either of the businesses necessarily, uh, on the run or QuickTrip requested a substation. We requested it when we talked to them. And particularly on the, on the run, clearly that neighborhood requested a substation. So at some point in time, whatever we're going to call this thing, I think it's clear that our community has spoken and I'm not sure how much the businesses will cover of the cost, but I think the council would make the decision as to how we cover the cost. I even go back to the Richmond Heights Community Center where there's a police substation. It, it's there. And so and at one point in time, we were going to put a police substation in the northeast cor- corner of the third ward of University City. And so we can call this a lot of different things.
I still like that idea.
Yeah, I understand. But, uh, at the, at the end of the day, I think that this matter needs to move forward in some context. So. Johnny, you have a, you have a puzzled look. When you have a puzzled look, I've been around you long enough that I, I'm happy for you to speak.
So, uh, the, the council may recall on November 14th of, of last year at the meeting, there was a conditional use permit that was considered and approved. Um, Councilmember McMahon made a, a motion which council approved that, uh, basically, uh, provided that the hours would be 5:00 AM until 1:00 AM. However, if there was a police substation constructed, uh, and the police department was allowed to use it as such, then the operator would be able to stay open for an additional four hours. So because the council approved that cup, the, um, it, the execution of that or administration of that would be a matter for the city manager and his staff, uh, to, uh, to carry out, meaning that the design of the substation, the particulars of that substation would not necessarily come back before the council, but would be up to the city manager and staff, uh, to determine compliance with that condition if the operator wants to open for those four hours. So I think the city manager said it, it's helpful to have this, this kind of information that will guide him and, and staff in, in, um, implementing this condition. So just, uh, just some context. And I'm not sure where the operator is in the construction process. Thank you.
Mr. Smotherson.
Thank you, Mayor Crowe. Um, um, Chief Hampton, I just wanted to say that I appreciate your explanation of a substation and giving us that information. Because when we first started this conversation, um, I wasn't sure exactly what that meant. I mean, I, I do know that what we thought a substation meant, um, was we saw the sign and we just thought it was just a a quick spot for the police to hang out or, or just, you know, go in and, and take a break. But, uh, again, I appreciate this report and giving us a better insight into what that means and what you think that standard should be. Uh, I can definitely tell you that it looks like what, 26 by 30 dimensions? That definitely won't be something we'll be buil- building because that's almost, that's the size of my garage, you know? So, so I know that that's not something we're going to do. I, for me, and this is just personally me, with, um, the businesses that we are attracting now. All I'm looking, what I'm looking for is how do we best secure and give, uh, our residents and those businesses protection? Uh, just simply, and I do understand, again, appreciate your report. They should hire their own security firms and I understand that. How would our police interact and help make that, make you city and those businesses that are coming to us uh, feel more secure in that regard?
Well, uh, Councilman Smotherson, appreciate the question. The, the, the vision right now is not only getting up to staffing, but creating a, a business detail, a business patrol detail. So specifically, uh, with the Olive Corridor becoming a major business, uh, district. We're having two districts on two different ends of the town. So having district cars and district assignments, uh, dealing with residential calls, other businesses intertwined. And then going and having to have a presence at those businesses is not conducive. Even when I gave the, uh, security analysis to the businesses, whether that was the hotel on, on, in any zone, in any area without giving out specifics, as well as Costco and in that area. And I, we do know there's another, uh, major store coming besides the restaurants and what have you. So this is attention to detail to those particular business districts in general. Uh, but the staffing starts there. Uh, I can say that, you know, it, we're, we're doing a lot of different elements in bringing in people, but making sure we, we retain and, and then of move into that direction of the burglary detail, of a business detail, of anything of such, uh, that we can help facilitate our stakeholders and the businesses to feel safe. Right now, one thing I want to say, we're working on at the police station is, uh, getting back up and going with a safe zone. Safe zone, not only for children, but maybe we can create a safe zone for businesses, uh, specifically with the titling of, 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 I, I like boots on the ground. Let me, let me say that. I like active patrol. That's one reason we have GPSing and what have you. I'm not telling people they can't tell, take breaks. They do take their breaks, but being active and being stagnant, uh, stagnant patrol is not conducive to deterring. You can't deter, you can't measure the deterrence in crime in neighborhoods. You can't measure the deter. You don't know what you, you don't know what you don't know. And what I mean by that is specifically just the other day, we deterred a, an auto theft or we deterred a catalytic converter theft. But specifically, did we capture and arrest anyone that during that time? Not exactly, but that deterrence moved them out and showed that University City was not a soft target, was not a soft zone. So that's what our aim is and that's what our vision is, is, is to get up and going with these, uh, different directed patrols and units that we can focus specifically on business safety.
Anything else for the chief or the city manager? Chief, thank you very much for your report and answering. Mr. Rose, anything else?
That concludes our presentation, Mayor.
We have about 13 minutes until the, uh, regular session. I'm assuming we'll just take a break until 6:30.